Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. If you're here to speak on a designated public hearing item later in the agenda, please know that you will have an opportunity to speak when I introduce those items at the time of their public hearing. The city council and I will need to complete other items of business leading up to those items, so we appreciate your patience. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item and you haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to fill out and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council consideration. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. Also this evening, I'll be moving a few items around on the agenda this evening just to make sure we've got a couple of council members who are appearing virtually, so I want to make sure that we get to those items first. But before we get to that, we're going to go ahead and if you are able to and willing to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you're able to stand, please do. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight's agenda has the number of items that the city council was considering in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the Call to the Audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
All right, and we are now going to play a video as well conveying the city of Tempe's native land acknowledgement statement.
We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Oatham, known as Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Oatham of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Gila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
All right, excellent. We're going to move forward here to item number four, Meeting Minutes. Vice Mayor, are you online?
Yes, I am.
All right, so I'm going to look to you for the approval of city council meeting minutes, items four, eight, one through three. Can you make a motion?
I am so moved to approve items one through three.
Thank you so much. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote. All right, and I will...
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chin?
Aye.
Councilmember Keating? Councilmember Navarro? Okay, and then that item passes four to zero with Councilmember Hodge, Councilmember Keating, and Councilmember Navarro absent. Next up, we have item 4B, Acceptance of Board Commission and Committee Meeting Minutes. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, motion to approve the minutes, please.
Great, thank you so much. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Can we clear the board really quickly? All right, thank you so much.
Aye.
All right. Let's see, Councilmember Keating?
Aye.
Councilmember Navarro? Hold on.
Aye.
All right. And let's see, was Councilmember Keating on? Hold on, okay. Okay, Vice Mayor, I've got your aye. Councilmember Navarro, I've got your aye as well. Is Councilmember Keating, are you on? He said it too. Okay, got it. Okay, then thank you. Then, and Councilmember Chin's voted, so that item passes five to zero with Councilmember, let's see, Councilmember Hodge, actually, six to zero, with Councilmember Hodge absent. All right. Next up here, we are going to move to reports and announcements, just I have one. Item 5A, One City of Tempe Board and Commission Vacancies and Appointments. In partnership with the city clerk's office, the city council would like to thank all of our residents and other community members who offer their dedication and expertise to Tempe's boards and commissions. There will be 62 openings on 15 boards and commissions that need to be filled by the end of this year, so that's three months, so we do need your help. The Aviation Commission, Board of Adjustment, Commission on Disability Concerns, Family Justice Commission, and Technical Code Advisory Board of Appeals are especially in need of applications, so please visit tempe.gov/bordsandcommissions to learn more and to apply. Tonight, the city council will be considering appointments to the Tempe Citizens Panel for review of police complaints and use of force, Family Justice Commission, and Technical Code Advisory Board of Appeals, as outlined in 7A1 on the agenda. Congratulations to David Falconer, Leslie Lang, James Swig, and Ann Betancourt on their appointments. We will now play a video showcasing board and commission members talking about why they serve. Or we won't. Thank you. That's okay, we can play that video next time. All right. It's all right, Jason, we good, we're good. All right. That moves me to a couple of quick things here as well. Got to have a little bit of fun while you're here, too. All right, so I've got a few proclamations here that I'm just going to read. And the first proclamation that I have here is for National Diaper Need Awareness Month. And this one reads, "Whereas diaper need, the condition of not being able to afford a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers dry, clean, and healthy, can adversely affect the health and well-being of children and their families. And whereas, national surveys and research studies report that nearly one in two families struggles with diaper need, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend the available supply. And whereas, a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs that enable children to thrive and parents to work. And whereas, many parents struggling with diaper need report missing an average of five days of work each month due to insufficient supply of diapers. And whereas, without enough diapers, children risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention resulting in medical costs, and parents may be prevented from accessing childcare needed to go to school or work, thereby destabilizing the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas, the people of the city of Tempe recognize that diaper need is a public health issue, and addressing diaper need can lead to economic prosperity and opportunity for the state's families and communities and improved health for children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas, city of Tempe is proud to be home to trusted community-based organizations, including the Arizona Diaper Bank, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families, and thus distribute diapers to families through various channels. And whereas, through their important work of addressing diaper need, diaper banks play a critical role in supporting families, improving infant health and well-being, and advancing our local and state economic growth. And now whereas, the city of Tempe thanks the aforementioned Diamond Banks, their staff, volunteers, and donors for their courageous service during the crisis, and encourages the citizens of Tempe to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and support those organizations that collect and distribute diapers to families struggling with diaper need, so that all city of Tempe children and families can thrive and reach their full potential. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare September 18th through September 24th, 2023, as National Diaper Need Awareness Week in Tempe, Arizona." Okay, the next proclamation I have is Rachel Putman here this evening. All right, I'll meet you up front. All right, so the next proclamation I have here is for Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. And I always tell people that this one's always very tough for me because as many people know, I lost my mother back on January 4th, 2012, to ovarian cancer. I tell people all the time that when I first found out that she actually had cancer, was actually sitting in an executive session upstairs during a council meeting when I got an email from my father to my brother and I that just said, "Mom has cancer, call when you get out." And I remember turning at that point to Councilmember Shanna Ellis, who was sitting right next to me, and saying, "What should I do?" And she said, "Well, if you need to leave, leave." But I remember stepping out for two seconds and calling my father, and he has persistently always sort of kept this attitude. He said, "You know, Corey, I know this is devastating for you, but your mom was very proud of you and the work that you've done, and so she would want you to stay and complete the meeting. There's nothing you can do from where you are right now, but the best thing you can do to serve her and make her proud is to finish the meeting and just simply do your job." And unfortunately, she lasted about two and a half years after that diagnosis, but unfortunately passed about 11 and a half years or so now, and it feels like it was just yesterday, honestly, and I still miss her every day. And I tell people all the time, I would give back everything for just five more minutes of conversation with my mother. So, always hard for me to talk about, but I will get through this. So, whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading cause of death among women, and the American Cancer Society estimates each year approximately 19,710 women will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer in 2023, and 13,270 individuals will die from the disease nationwide, including 450 new cases and 320 deaths in Arizona. And whereas, in the United States, a woman's lifetime risk of being diagnosed with ovarian cancer is about 1 in 78. And whereas, due to vague symptoms and the lack of reliable early detection tests, most women are not diagnosed until stage three or later, which is when my mom was diagnosed too, was stage three, when the cancer has already begun to spread to the lymph nodes and outside of the pelvis. And whereas, although the five-year survival rate for stage-one ovarian cancer is over 90%, only 15% of ovarian cancers are diagnosed at this early stage, and the five-year survival rate for late-stage ovarian cancer is below 30%. And whereas, while a mammogram can detect breast cancer and a pap smear can detect cervical cancer, there is no reliable early detection test for ovarian cancer. And whereas, women's lives can be saved through increased public awareness of ovarian cancer and its risk factors, signs, and symptoms. And whereas, this month, the city of Tempe joins all who are battling ovarian cancer, those who have lost their lives to the disease, their loved ones, and our state's many dedicated healthcare workers in spreading awareness, committing to public education, and embracing hope for better diagnoses, treatments, and a cure. And whereas, all residents of the city of Tempe are encouraged to observe Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month and support the cause that so deeply impacts families in every community across our country. Now therefore, I, Corey D. Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare September 2023 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona." And I got through it. All right. Next up is Naomi here. Where is she? There she is. Councilmember Garland, can you come join me now for this one? Three days in a row, Naomi, we've seen each other, it's great. Naomi and I had a chance to have lunch a couple of days ago, then we were at her going-away party yesterday down at the Connections Cafe at the Tempe Public Library, and now she is here. And we have a proclamation for Lifetime of Service Recognition Day for Naomi. Naomi has been an employee here at the city of Tempe for 23 years, and I've known her ever since I first started back at the city, and she's been leading our education department for the last couple of years. She was the leader of our human services division for a number of years, and she's done a truly phenomenal job, and I'm going to miss seeing her each and every day. And I've always had a good time just getting to, just getting to know her. We had a really wonderful lunch a couple of days ago, and I learned even new things about her that I didn't know through all the 15 years that we had previously known one another, but I just wanted to thank you for your service to the city of Tempe and to all of our residents, and especially talking about your work in human services, many times working with the most vulnerable people living here in our community, and then in the last couple of years of your service, helping our educators and helping our students achieve their best success, and frankly, helping prepare our students for success in college, career, and life. So I just wanted to say thank you for everything. And with that, I also have a proclamation that reads, "Whereas Tempe employees value the faith and trust of the community and continually work to deserve that confidence through attitude, conduct, service, and accomplishments. And whereas, Naomi Farrell has served the city of Tempe for 23 years in various capacities such as Kidzone Program Supervisor and Administrator, Deputy Community Services Director with the Social Services Division, Tempe's First Human Services Director, and Tempe's First Office of Education, Career, and Family Services Director. And whereas, as a champion for education, career development, and family services that support the full arc of life, she has worked on several key programs such as Care Economy, which includes Tempe Pre and Kidzone, Career Ready Tempe, Tempe Workforce Development, Workforce Skills Accelerator, and other apprenticeship programs. And whereas, Naomi's priorities as a leader have always been to empower staff to set and achieve goals, and to provide them with the support and resources necessary to build successful programs that deliver valuable services to Tempe's diverse community. And whereas, Naomi was instrumental in Tempe's participation in the 2023-2024 Good Jobs, Great Cities Academy, an initiative of the National League of Cities and the Department of Labor, I will say we were only one of 16 cities throughout the country that got selected for that, and that was largely due to the work of Naomi and her team, to create innovative and scalable city-supported solutions that upscale and rescale workers into quality, high-demand jobs in infrastructure, clean energy, and advanced manufacturing. And whereas, the city of Tempe is grateful to Naomi Farrell for her leadership, hard work, and deep commitment to ensuring the success of Tempe residents, employees, and the overall community throughout her entire career. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare September 28th, 2023, as Naomi Farrell Lifetime of Service Recognition Day in Tempe, Arizona." Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so you also, some of you folks in the audience might have also went home, might have also seen these. I had to joke with Mark a little bit since he's our municipal budget director. How much did we actually spend on these? Just kidding. Just kidding! I told Mark also I need this actually signed, and so I could actually put this in my office and hold it on, hold on to it, so. If Mark Day could come join me down here, Mark is our municipal budget director who is also retiring, and I wanted to...
We got you up here, Mark.
We pulled you up. Now, the question is, can I hold this while reading the entire proclamation? I'm going to certainly try. So, "Whereas, the city of Tempe truly values the dedicated public servants who have committed their talents and time to the betterment of our community. And whereas, Mark Day has exemplified the highest standards of dedication, expertise, and leadership during his 22-year tenure with the city of Tempe and culminating as the city's budget director. And whereas, Mark Day has been instrumental in shaping the financial landscape of our city, contributing significantly to its growth, stability, and prosperity. And whereas, Mark Day is expertly and reliably guided the mayor and council through each budget process, one of the core responsibilities of this elected body. And whereas, Mark Day's commitment to transparency, accountability, and fiscal responsibility has earned him the respect and admiration of colleagues, city officials, and residents alike. And whereas, Mark Day's steadfast dedication to the financial well-being of the city of Tempe has resulted in numerous accolades and awards, further solidifying his status as a visionary and respected leader in the field of municipal finance. And whereas, the city of Tempe staff will greatly miss Mark and his role as our official master of puns. And whereas, Mark Day's retirement marks the conclusion of a remarkable chapter in the history of our city, and it is only fitting that his contributions be celebrated and acknowledged by the community he has served so diligently. Therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare October 9th, 2023, as Mark Day Lifetime of Service Recognition Day in Tempe, Arizona." All right, next up, item 5B, City Managers' Reports and Announcements. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things I'd like to mention. One is, we had a very exciting day in city of Tempe history. We had President Joe Biden visit our first city Tempe building, first sitting president to visit a city building. So, I just wanted to take a moment to thank staff. Things like this don't happen overnight, and that's exactly pretty much what happened. Last weekend, they were deciding where to go in Arizona. There was two locations. Our city of Tempe made a great pitch. We got, the city of Tempe were honored to receive the message on Monday, and then there was a lot of work. So I need to take a moment to really thank the staff. As you all know, when you host anything in your own home, what happens, right? Think about that at this magnitude. So, I have to start with leading, thanking Chief of Staff Tanya Chavez. Unbelievable, I don't think she has slept. Thank you, Tanya. Keith Burke, of course. A million questions every day as far as what we needed to do, but thank you, Keith. Craig Hayden, Community Services Director, and the staff at Tempe Center for the Arts. Amazing building today. It was just a team effort from so many people. They're listed here, I'm not going to have enough time or else we're going to be here till midnight and everyone wants to get home. But I just wanted to thank the staff. Jared Morris, IT, they were there the crack of sundown, sunset, and sunrise this morning, IT Director, IT Staff, Charlie Bladine, Facilities Manager, and all the facilities maintenance staff. That includes our custodians who are working round the clock. And I have to say thank you personally to them. We know them, they work very hard. And Isaac, who I know is here, Transportation Maintenance Manager and Street Staff. Our trees look beautiful, our streets look great, thank you. And Chris Baxter, our Interim Communications Director and Channel 11 staff. He may not have had the video for this today, but everything else was working great. CNN was there, he took care of all of it, so we'll give him a little grace. So, just thank you from the city manager's staff and our mayor and council for just a team effort. Tempe proud. So, and then following, obviously, you write a proclamation for a couple of our employees. Thank you for Naomi, thank you for your service, 23 years. You have taken care of our kids from Kidzone 23 years ago. You have taken care of our families through pre-K, and not just that, but helping our children thrive through College Connect and making sure that they are ready for the world. So I appreciate the service. We wish you the very best, Naomi. Thank you. And then Mark Day, I know there's a video, there's a picture that I need to... So, Mark Day, aside from his puns, this is when we used to work at second floor of City Hall. This is just me walking on the way to my office, you can see the papers in my hand. He says, "Jump in the dolly." Okay, this is what Mark did all the time. So, I have to say, whoever thinks Budget Office folks are boring or dull, he has changed that trajectory and that perception and that paradigm. So, Mark, we will miss you very much and your humor, and thank you for not just, for making ledgers look a lot more interesting, a lot more fun as we go through the budget. And I think that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds good, thank you so much. All right, next up, we're going to get to item number six, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. I've got three public appearances, and once again, I've got separate cards for those people speaking on specific items, but these were just the general public appearances that I'm going to do now. So the first public appearance I have is Mario Martinez. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Mario Martinez, I live in Tempe. In Tempe, the September 11th memorial event known as the Tempe Healing Field has been sponsored by the Tempe Exchange Club. I support this event. While the Tempe Exchange Club is not an official Tempe organization, what is indisputable is that the Tempe Exchange Club utilizes city of Tempe resources in the form of public land and public service for this event. Because city of Tempe resources are used in this event, the public has a right to expect that all victims of September 11th, especially those employees who lost their lives in these terrorist actions, be represented by their legal representatives at the Tempe Healing Field Event. This includes airline attendants. On September 11, 2001, using box cutters, the hijackers slit the throats of some flight attendants when they seized control of the airplanes. The other flight attendants on those planes lost their lives, along with the other airplane passengers and pilots when the plane went down. And under the Railway Labor Act, airline employees have the right to join unions. Locally, the Association of Professional Flight Attendants, APFA, Phoenix Base, is legally recognized by the National Labor Relations Board as the local legal union representative of the flight attendants. I do not speak for the AFP, APFA Phoenix Base, but they are members of the AFL-CIO, as I am. In my private discussions with APFA Phoenix Base members, they have seen no evidence that their union representatives were ever invited to be fully participating parties in the Tempe Healing Field Event. On September 11, 2001, I was in Tempe. I also voted in the Tempe mayoral recall election that... I also voted in the Tempe mayoral recall election that day. I take employee rights very seriously, and I expect equity in the delivery of Tempe municipal services. Since September 11, I have not seen any public union official representation for the flight attendants in these events. Because the City of Tempe resources are used for this event, the possible lack of official APFA Phoenix Base representation is unacceptable if that is the case. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is David Sokolowski, who I believe is virtual.
Hello.
Yes, Mr. Sokolowski, please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is David Sokolowski. I live in Tempe. The city wants to spend nearly $200 million to accelerate pavement quality index, but we need to build 1,000 units below 80% AMI every year. At current rates, Tempe isn't keeping up with inflation or population growth. All of the city's affordable housing projects combined is less than one year's worth of progress. Why isn't the city investing more in affordable housing? You're worried about the cost of pavement and the difference between 200,000 per mile and 400,000 per mile. But where is Tempe going to find vacant land in the future? And how much will an acre of land cost in 2030 or 2040? Tempe's policies is costing our state thousands of units and hundreds of affordable units. Tempe purchased three acres at Food City for 10 million, but the development agreement restricts the amount of housing that can be built. We're losing at least 120 units during a housing shortage and without a legitimate reason. Tempe would need to buy three more acres of land, so the opportunity cost is probably 10 million. If we don't build affordable housing, the city will be overwhelmed by poverty, and it will impact police, fire, parks, transit, and the economy. PQI will be the least of your concerns if we have the problems that are happening in other cities. I know that's not an exaggeration because you're spending millions of dollars to mitigate it, like cleaning up the river bottom, buying hotels, the Hope Team, and hiring park rangers. We had calls to the Fire Department, and then you invested millions of dollars into cooling centers to prevent that, but none of it has addressed the root causes of the housing crisis. Some people have asked, are other cities doing their fair share? But Tempe's job growth has outpaced the region's supply of affordable housing. Thousands of people are commuting in each day, and Tempe's housing navigators tell people to look for affordable housing in cities like Mesa. Tempe isn't ashamed to admit that we partner with Mesa to place people at the East Valley Men's Shelter. It looks like you're trying to deport poor people while refusing to invest in affordable housing, other than a handful of token examples like Valor or Gracie's Village. Denello Plaza would include 150 units, which is about 60 days' worth of progress, but the city will continue to take credit for years. Tempe needs to take responsibility for its own affordable housing, and you can't claim that you don't have money for it. If the city doesn't take emergency action, we won't be able to keep up. If Tempe fails to build 1,000 units per year, what happens when we need to build 2,000 units per year? The roads will be in perfect condition, but every corner will be a homeless camp. Don't wait for the housing crisis to spiral out of your control. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Ann Till. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Ann Till, Tempe resident. I want to introduce you to Shalimar Golf Course as I know it, as a 30-year neighborhood resident. It was built in 1961, is the center of the neighborhood, and remains so. It may even get more neighborhood use than Sella Park. It equally is important in any case. Many residents take advantage of the nine-hole golf course, but the course and its clubhouse are used for many activities. It's our go-to place. For example, I'm not a golfer, but I eat at the clubhouse restaurant and have been to an occasional small live music show there. I've been to several Thursday food track events, which are a big draw and fun. Plus, they are a great chance to get to know your neighbors. Other events are scheduled in the clubhouse, such as Ladies' Game Day and various club meetings in the McQuintock, cross-country team practices there, and has an annual event. The course has fantastic Google reviews, which is a credit to the New Heisel family, the owners. Because it is nine-hole, it's affordable, and it takes much less time. Neighborhood residents are extremely passionate. In 1979, they formed a nonprofit to battle proposed residential that would remove the course. After two appeals, that resulted in a judgment requiring that Shalimar Golf Course was to remain. The nonprofit group remains active and passionate today with several hundred members with the sole mission to protect the golf course. This is because there are constant attempts to sell to developers who'd replace the course with residential. The thought of a potential golf course demise is a constant stress to our community. So again, the owners have found a potential buyer who is preparing to rezone and then remove the golf course. Removing, rezoning, sorry, rezoning substantially increases the property value, which is nice for the owners. I do understand the owners want to maximize profit by rezoning. But years ago, these same owners purchased Shalimar Golf Course to remain as a golf course and at a golf course zone price. The owners live near the golf course and know the neighborhood. They know how important this golf course is to the neighborhood, but they continue to find potential buyers who will destroy it. So the neighborhood will again fight against the Shalimar owners. So I'm here to familiarize you with the situation, and I'm sure you all hear from countless residents on this topic over the next few years. Save Shalimar signs are more prolific in front yards. Again, this is a passionate group of residents and not those just adjacent to the golf course. So I asked that the city not support this future rezoning effort and instead ask the owners to team up with the Shalimar nonprofit. And real quick, this is critical...
Ten more seconds.
Yep. This is a critical part of the neighborhood. The neighborhood owns the property in a different way than the owners, but we bought our homes in the neighborhood because it's character, and Shalimar Golf Course is essential to that. And it's not just any golf course, it's our golf course.
Thank you. Appreciate this. We'll see you a little bit later tonight, too, so thank you. All right. That was all the cards I have. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council this evening? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting. Now, once again, I'm going to move some things around this evening because we've got some council members who are on virtually, so I just want to make sure that we don't have any issues with technology moving forward. So I'm going to just shift around a little bit with your acceptance. So I'm going to move on here to Section 8, but specifically 8C, which are ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. So these are items that actually, that votes will be taking place this evening. And with that said, these are, there are a few of these here. I'm going to start here with the applicant for item 8C1. I'll just take these in the order here. So 8C1 is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt a resolution for a general planned land use map amendment from open space to mixed use, a general plan residential density map amendment from medium-high density and no-density to high-density urban core, adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from general industrial district within Rio Solado Overlay District and Transportation Overlay District to mixed-use high-density within the RSOD and TOD, and adopt a planned area development overlay to establish development standards for municipal rezoning of First and Farmer located at 26 South Farmer Avenue. The applicant is Hugh Mantle and Affiliates. I guess I'll start, I just want to note two as well. This is a general plan amendment, so the resolution authorizing the general plan requires at least a two-thirds City Council majority vote, which is five out of seven. We only have six this evening, but it would still be five out of six votes to actually move this item forward. With that said, Mr. Hugh Mantle?
Good evening. I will try to follow up on Mr. Biden, but that's a tough act to follow today. So the presentation immediately after the President of the United States, that's awkward. As you know, this is the second hearing we've been before you, so I'll kind of go through the slides a little faster, but happy to go back and talk about things in any order. And we also have some updates. People are probably happier if they don't hear me. I understand. Thank you. The site we're all familiar with is along the lake, specifically First Street and Farmer and Rio Solado. The site has, I think, as everyone knows, been industrial for a long time. This is sort of the last, one of the very last remaining pieces of industrial land in what has since become one of the densest neighborhoods in all of the state. And so it isn't great to have this piece of remaining GID land, especially because it separates many neighbors and, again, the highest, the most dense area of the state from the downtown. We want to continue that connectivity, much as we have going north and south along Farmer. I'll spend some time talking about that as well. But the GID uses that currently exist are obviously incompatible with the growth of the neighborhood. We started, Todd, Todd Marshall and I, started working on this when we were much younger, and we've taken a lot of our lives really to turn an area that was parking lots, albeit empty parking lots, and sort of camping grounds, and vacant industrial buildings, and turn them into a place for people, a place that connected the neighborhood and the downtown. And we've always seen this tough site as a great opportunity, but it is, in fact, a very tough site. You can tell from this picture from long ago, it's a very narrow site. It was literally concrete and asphalt. We have challenges with electrical lines and railroad tracks. And in its previous life, really, no way for people to get around, no sidewalks, very little shade. It was, and it was like this for decades. And we promised to do a number of things, and we have. The first thing we did was, the very first building was Encore, which is an affordable, senior affordable housing project. We, in fact, won the Crescorti Award, which is a development award for the best multifamily project in a year. Doesn't usually go to an affordable project, but in this year it did. We're really proud of what happened. As we walk through these photos and images, I'd like you to think about what was there before, the tight site that existed, and also all of the pedestrian space we put in its place, and the four-sided architecture you see on every building. It's very rare in the world, much less Tempe, to find buildings that are all four-sided pedestrian access and four sides of design. But specifically, and we heard from somebody earlier today about affordability, we were one of the first to bring affordability into the downtown. In fact, I think we have only the, only two projects in the downtown, this and another project next door, which is mixed income. We also are proud that we, in this particular project, had incredible amount of solar. And even on the parking garage, parking canopies and the rooftop, we have solar all over the project. So we have always worked to create sustainability in our projects, and we're proud of what we've been able to accomplish. You can see the massive amount of solar on this project, and this is several years ago, before it was as popular as it is today. And even today, you don't see it often. Again, this is how that site looked when we came in, certainly not a great place for pedestrians. It has transformed into part of the most dense part of the state. And you can see here, we have wide sidewalks with shade, access for all folks, including folks who may be disabled. You can see that we have water harvesting on the parking spaces on the street so that the trees grow bigger and provide more shade. The second project, Residence Farmer, is, to my knowledge, the only mixed-income project in downtown, maybe in Tempe. They're a challenge, but we worked with the city. And Mayor, you were involved in that effort, not as mayor, but as a council member, to work with the State Housing Department to create a mixed-income project. And we're very proud to have that. Again, this is what it looked like before and what it looks like now. We really think we've been able to transform the area into a no-man's land, and from that, I should say, into a really integral part of our city, and certainly for the folks that live here, part of their neighborhood, and even for folks that don't, a great place to walk by. We see buildings as having two purposes. One purpose is for the folks that live in the building or work in the building, and the second is for those that just happen to walk by. And so we've tried to create an environment for both. Again, this is what it looked like before. And Kellonai Dropout is another example. We have worked over the years to turn actual GID space, industrial space, into, in this case, a restaurant and exercise facility. When Sam Fox opened this restaurant the night before, he and I sat at that long table, and we talked about whether or not people would come to this area. And he was worried. It was his largest investment at the time, and it ended up being his, at the time, his most successful restaurant. But people were worried, would people cross the tracks? And I think what we collectively developed allowed people to feel comfortable doing that and really brought a sense of place to what is now Farmer Arts District. But it wasn't always that way. The Vibe is another example of the work we've done in Farmer Arts. It's a hotel. It has a number of features that we're really proud of, including the four-sided architecture, but it also has a bar and restaurant on the ground floor, which provides a retail and pedestrian experience. It also has a rooftop that we had always promised that has, by the way, amazing views of the downtown. Hudson was our next project at University and Farmer. Proud of this project as well. Again, four-sided architecture, again, significant passageways for pedestrians on all four sides. And finally, the Beam. The Beam is a project we completed recently. It's CLT building, which means it's made out of wood. It's really one of the most environmentally progressive buildings in the country. Certainly, it's the first one in Arizona. Instead of using steel and concrete as the base of the building, it's made out of wood. And we're pretty excited about all the discussions around town that has started and people realizing that they have other alternatives to just using concrete and steel. We also think, in addition to being environmentally sensitive, it creates a really great sense of place. And I think that one of the things Todd and I have always focused on with each of our buildings is making sure that what we do is create a sense of place, again, inside the building, special building, a unique building, but also outside by creating that pedestrian space. Again, this is what that site looked like before, and now with our improvements, our pathways, our sidewalks, this is what it looks like today. The middle picture, I believe, even appeared on a previous version of the general plan. So we're proud that it can be an example for the city and how to create great outdoor spaces for folks. We have won several awards for Farmer Arts. I'm not going to go through those again. You've seen them before, and frankly, I hate to talk about the things we've done, but I think it's important in this case. And this is the site today. It's First Street and Farmer. It is a site that has a number of challenges. It has power lines, it has railroad tracks, it has flood control issues, it has a historic building and non-historic buildings on it. And it's a challenge, but it's also, as I mentioned earlier, an industrial site, a place that shouldn't be industrial. And the first thing that we're doing is taking off that industrial piece. The second thing we're doing, which I'll talk about in just a few minutes, is working on the restoration of the original structure from the 1880s. This is what the site looks like today. The site is appropriately located, really at the center of all of Tempe's transportation. It is exactly the kind of place you'd expect to find density. In fact, the only reason we invest in these billions of dollars of public transportation is so that people can be close to them and use them. And I think this site really helps, or this exhibit, excuse me, really helps show the importance of connectivity. We're near Tempe's bus routes, and as you all know, that Tempe was one of the first cities to increase bus transportation, including the Orbit system, which we have access to, the streetcar, the light rail system. We're near everything. In addition to that, and perhaps most importantly, this is a site that's walkable to almost all of Tempe's downtown office space. And one of the things, and you have several letters from employers in the area saying that it's important to them to find more housing options that's walkable. I think that one of the things you find today is people don't want long commute times. You, of course, know this. You've focused as a council on a 20-minute city and finding places for housing to be near workforces, and this is exactly what this is. We think this is perfectly situated, not only for the mass transportation options that Tempe has invested in, but also the private sector investment in office space, not only the Beam, but also everything that's been on Tempe Town Lake. And Tempe is obviously focused on having greater density along the lake and along those transportation corridors. And so we think it makes sense here for that reason. I've talked about the challenges before. I'm going to move quickly through some of the work we've done here. As I know, we have some time issues, but Todd and I have both been involved in a fair amount of historic preservation. We have been involved in... We have been involved in Culinary Dropout. My own office is from 1880. It sits on Ash, and it's used today as an office, but it's an old building that's been restored. We also spent time with your staff as recently as this morning, going over the historic preservation piece. This is a demolition plan. Probably doesn't mean a lot to you to see it, but we were out with your staff today and our contractors, working to demolish the portions of the project that are not historic, so that we can preserve the pieces that are. We're waiting for a permit from City Tempe, but really from the county. The city can't issue its permit until the county issues its, which we expect to happen in the next couple of weeks. And as soon as that happens, we're ready to deconstruct all of the unpermitted and sort of disabling improvements over time. What I mean by that is, many of those improvements weren't done properly, and they're causing damage to the adobe structure. And I know this council, in fact, these council members have spoken quite a bit about preserving our history, and we're certainly committed to that as well, both on prior projects, as well as here today. This is the second time you've heard from me, so I think at this point in time, I'll sit down and then have a chance to come back, unless there are questions now.
Sounds good. I think what I'll do is I'll go to the public hearing first, and if I can bring you back up afterwards, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zuma, appreciate it. All right, I've got three cards on this item, and I'll once again call these in the order that I received them. The first card this evening is from Ann Till. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Ann Till, Tempe resident. And I just wanted to encourage you to vote no on the rezoning, mainly because the building height that I saw at the last meeting was fairly tall, and I think it's inappropriate for this section. I think that that height of a building should remain on the downtown side of the railroad. And, you know, there should be more of a transition into the neighborhood. Granted, everything that the developer's talked about, he's done a great job down there, but I don't think this fits in that's a more residential area. So maybe keep this height, building height, on the other side of the railroad tracks, and maybe rezone it later if the building height could come down. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Kim Gaffney Loza. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Kim Gaffney Loza, North Tempe resident. And actually, I'm for this amendment to the land use plan, and for several reasons. This historic property goes back to the very foundings of our city, our Hispanic neighbors, and it has been deteriorating ever since the city took possession of it, because there hasn't been any interest from the general, you know, public as far as taking care of this property. There has been a lot of homeless on this property, there's a lot of invasive plants on this property that are a fire hazard. I personally, in touring it, have come across a pyre ready to be set fire right next to the building. I think it's very courageous for a developer to look at this property for a development, because it does have so many challenges, many that Mr. Hulmantel has mentioned. And I think you have to look at the cost benefit. We do need the housing. It is not next to single-family homes. It is right next to other areas with multifamily. And I don't think, even with the increased height, I don't think it's inappropriate for this area, and I think it would actually be a boon to our downtown. So I hope the council does approve this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next card I have is from Tom Brown. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I wish all seven of you were here this night tonight. Good evening again, council members. My name is Tom Brown, I live in South Tempe, and I work on Farmer Avenue. I spoke against this rezoning case two weeks ago, and I will refrain from repeating what I trust you have some knowledge about, which is that density is adjacent to housing, some of the two and four stories, so it's quite a collision. Frankly, I feel this rezoning case does not deserve your support. I was fortunate to serve on the DRC for about five years, and after a year or two, I could sense how the votes were going to go well before a motion was made. On this rezoning case before you, I have a similar spidey sense, because several of you, at least several of you, have historically approved any, and I repeat, any development or rezoning, whenever you hear the words growth, density, downtown, parking garage, robust sidewalks, and occasionally the very obscene word, gyplets. This happens regardless of the aesthetics, the neighborhood impact, or the street experience. That pattern has been, I think, a business-as-usual situation, and the discussions you had last week in your joint review meeting with the DRC were really illustrative. They're illustrative because I can see that some of you may have come to realize that business-as-usual is not widely supported in Tempe, except by zoning attorneys and some out-of-state firms who have capitalized on the explosive but poorly planned vertical growth. Money talks loudly, but it is rude, and it cares not for the concerns of neighborhoods. It tramples over rezoning concepts like a community buffer. Let's speak of neighborhoods, that's where we live. I have never repeated, never, ever heard anything less than support for protecting neighborhoods and our quality of life when you campaign for our votes. I wish I could look at all of you right now. But when I watch council meetings on Channel 11, I see council members obediently voting, more in line with the $590 contributions and the $1,000 parties, ignoring the concerns of the neighbors, which are full of taxpaying voters. Let me wrap this up. Fifty-seven percent of Tempe voters spoke decisively a few months ago against a monstrous tax-waving project, which all seven of you approved from those seats. When you formally accepted the results of that vote at a council meeting about a month later, we only heard one of you say anything. So thank you, Mayor Woods, for showing some leadership there. Fifty-seven percent of us, fifty-seven percent of us expected some personal comments, perhaps some acknowledgement, not silence. You do not have to be silent, this is Tempe, there's nothing to be afraid of. And you do not have to approve this case. Fifty-seven percent. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last card I had in my hand. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Yes, please, please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have
Okay, council, thank you. Congratulate on everyone that Tempe got their claim of fame today with the president arriving at a city building. I think that's spectacular, and we need more of that. We don't need more apartments, that's for sure. Mixed use is almost like peanut butter. You got to spread it everywhere, it's got to be everywhere. It's not, doesn't have to be everywhere. Tempe's becoming almost like a bedroom community. Where are the jobs right now? It seems that everybody wants to live in Tempe, but they're working either in Mesa, they're working in Phoenix, they're working in Chandler, or they're working in Scottsdale. I mean, where are the jobs here? I like this project, I like the land, it's a good spot. You've got environmental hazards, I don't know what lender's going to look at this, but I'm going to speak for the lenders on this, so you've got FAA issues, you've got airport noise issues, you've got environmental problems with either the sewer and the waterline easements, you've got a high voltage right next to it, and you've got a Class 1 railroad. You've got everything against a multifamily apartment like this, especially at 200 feet. Mr. Hulmantel, he wants to get this mixed use four, so we can get the unlimited heights. However, if it mixed use three, he can get it at 50 feet, and gives him a little bit more buffer there. I urge you to vote no. We don't need another 210-story building, or 210-foot, what, 20 or third, 22, I think, story building? It should be somewhere capped at maybe mixed use three, 50 feet, 25 dwelling units per acre in this area, and of course, keep the Martinez house, because that's historical, and you can do a lot with that. That's an open palette. But anyway, I support the project in a reduced matter, but I encourage you to vote no for mixed use four, and vote yes for maybe an amendment on mixed use three, if anything. I'd really like to see commercial, maybe move the police station down there, move the court, move something. Where's the public benefit? That's what we'd like to see. Anyway, thank you for the time.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Yes, please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
My name's Dax Howard, I live in Phoenix, but have formerly lived in Tempe and worked here. I just, as a fellow developer, I was very impressed with what you guys have done. I don't know if it's always apparent how hard some of these projects are to do, if you're not in the weeds every day doing them. And I just wanted to come up and say that I was very impressed, and though I can't speak to the height or some of the specific issues of this, it looks like a fantastic project.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Let me see if Mr. Hulmantel is rejoined us up here?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I know, I believe Vice Mayor Adams had her hand up, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Adams, can you hear me? Okay, I can come back to her. Anyone else on the council, anyone, I'm going to sort of rely on the clerk to see if there are hands up in the audience, amongst the council?
Only Vice Mayor Adams. She should be able to unmute herself.
In fairness, I had problems with the mic as well today, so it's a day of technical challenges.
Well, I can cover a couple of quick things here, and I'll wait for the Vice Mayor to jump back on. So just, you know, first of all, appreciate the presentation. I know many times that we only will have a presentation during the first public hearing, but I know that you gave basically two full presentations on both, during both hearings, and I know you're aware of some of the concerns that have been raised by some of the neighbors. And so I appreciate the willingness to go through this for really full transparency, so everyone knows exactly what's going on in the situation. Just wanted to address a couple of things that have been raised to me, and a couple of thoughts that I had. One of the questions that I know had been raised to members of council was, why didn't the city, when this land was put up for auction by the, this was state land trust land, and why didn't the city actually make a bid to try to purchase the land ourselves? One of the things regarding that is that state trust land by law has to actually take the high bid. And one of the things that we are allowed to do as, that we are allowed to do, we are not allowed to actually bid over things that they are over appraised value. There's actually been a couple of times where we've tried to make acquisitions during the three-plus years that I've been mayor, and I know Councilmember Garland knows about this as well, where we literally had an LOI or letter of intent for a couple of properties that we were trying to acquire to do affordable housing. One, I specifically remember, came back at appraised at 2.7 million, and the owner wanted four and a quarter. And of course, then we had to cancel him. It would have been a great affordable housing opportunity, but the challenge at that point was, we simply, as a taxpayer-funded governmental entity, cannot pay more than appraised value for land. Obviously, our residents expect fiscal stewardship and not us to be acting as real estate speculators. And so one of the challenges in this situation, when it even came to bidding on the land when it went up for auction, would have been, we could have only paid up to appraised value. And so just wanted to make sure that I put that out there, just from kind of an academic standpoint, about the difference between, you know, negotiating even with a private owner, and negotiating when a piece of state trust land is put up for auction. The other thing I was going to say too, is that this property has had a lot of challenges over the years. I know Mr. Hulmantel showed a lot of photos about some of the, the way it looked previously. I remember I moved to Tempe back in June of 2003, and I remember exactly what that Farmer Arts property actually looked like, and there was pretty much nothing there. And obviously, steadily but surely, all of the different developments have happened, they've all been completed. And I love the fact that there's been a lot of affordable housing and mixed income housing along that stretch. And I believe probably the Culinary Dropout restaurant, I've got to imagine is still the highest grossing restaurant from a revenue standpoint, probably in all of Tempe. I know I live in the downtown area, and I routinely actually do not drive there because I live so close. I actually walk, and so I'm able to enjoy the pathway and the shade. And every time I'm actually there, I can literally see it's packed, whether I'm there on a Monday night, or a Wednesday night, or a Friday night. And as a lot of people know from a restaurant standpoint, many times Wednesdays and Thursdays are many times dead nights for restaurants, where they're kind of the middle of the week, when families and people are not out, for obvious reasons, work, school, things of that nature. But the restaurant really has added a tremendous, it's added a tremendous eatery to the city of Tempe, and it continues to be successful because of the quality. And what I see with this situation is, I really do see an opportunity. Now, this is sort of a two-part process, another piece of this. We're voting this evening on the rezoning, but we're not voting on an actual project. And so if this actually does get approved by council this evening, this would have to go back through an entire process for a second time, where Mr. Hulmantel would have to come back with actual renderings and designs, and have neighborhood meetings, and additional community input. It would have to go back through the Development Review Commission, it would have to go back through staff, so they can actually weigh in with a thumbs up or a thumbs down, and of course, would have to come back to council for another two public hearing processes. Why am I saying all this? It's to say that if something, if this actually does go through this evening with just the rezoning, there are going to be multiple other opportunities for residents to frankly weigh in. And I really appreciate Mr. Darcy's comments, talking about, he's not against the project. And even, I think Ms. Till said the same thing, not against the project. They've clearly seen that you've had an ability over the years to perform, and actually do the work that you've said you were going to do, but they have some concerns about the height, and the density, and the traffic, and things of that nature. I think those are all very valid concerns, that can absolutely be ferreted out during neighborhood meetings, and getting extensive community input, and going through things like DRC, and coming back before this council for two more hearings. But I do think that, given some of the challenges right now with the market, I think we need to give people sometimes a little bit more flexibility to allow for a project to get done. We've seen many times, Councilmember Garland, and myself, and the council members online this evening, where we are approving change order requests, because construction costs many times have gone up over 30% over the last 12 to 18 months. And so now, it's becoming harder and harder to get projects done, because things have just gotten more expensive, from the construction to all of the building materials. And so I really think that, you know, allowing a little bit of extra flexibility in this situation is important, to address an area that really has been challenged for quite some time. But I did want to just really quickly thank the forethought of the people before me, honestly. It was my predecessor, Mayor Mitchell, and the council before, that was really trying to get this property ready to a place where we could get to this point, and address a site that really has been very challenging for probably the last 20 to 30 years in the city of Tempe. So from my perspective, you know, I think this is what's being proposed here in terms of the conceptual idea and some of the public benefit. I think Mr. Darcy also talked about that too, and I really appreciated that comment as well, that I would love to make sure that this project can show a lot of, not adequate, but ample public benefit for not just people who would live at the project, but public benefit for people who've been in that neighborhood for 20, 30, 40, 50 years. And so that is something that I would look for when you come back, when it's actually fully formed project. And I think that is really critical, whether it's, you know, affordable, or workforce housing, or paths, or things of that nature, or just something where the public really does see some kind of benefit. But I appreciated their comments in saying, they absolutely see that it was a, it's a good project, you know, generally speaking, they just have, you know, some concerns that they'd like to talk about moving forward. So my thought about this is, since we're just simply talking about a rezoning, and the ability to talk about a partnership to begin to move something forward, I will definitely be in support of this this evening. I think that this is a site that we really have tried to fix and address for quite some time. I think we finally have a unique opportunity to get that done, and I'm excited about the possibilities and the conceptuals that you've talked about this evening, and also the things that have happened on Farmer prior to this project coming forward. So I will be supporting this this evening, and I just appreciate the presentation, but look forward to the neighborhood meetings, which I know I'll be attending myself, and getting some of the community input, to really make sure this is something that not only adds to the downtown, like, you know, like was talked about, but also it really enhances the neighborhoods that are surrounding, and provides ample public benefit for a lot of the residents who've been here for decades and made this community a great place to live and work. So with that said, Vice Mayor Adams? Vice Mayor Adams, can you hear me?
Yes, she is.
Yes. Oh, there you are. Go for it.
Okay, very good, thank you. Sorry about the problems with the technology here. Okay, I have a couple things to say about this. First of all, not a lot of developers would take on this project, and I'm really, really happy that Gerald Hulmantel and has taken on this project. As a huge sustainability supporter, I like that it has solar, and water harvesting, and a lot of trees. I mean, this is something that we've been pushing for with our other projects, and I'm just so happy that it has it. It's very valuable for our community. I mean, this will transform that whole area, which needs to be transformed. And, you know, the fact that they're taking care of the historical... And, you know, the fact that they're taking care of the historical buildings and things on that site is really, really important. And that's not inexpensive to do, because I know they're in pretty bad shape, but they're to fix them up, and it's going to be really a great place to have on our walking tour. And I want to thank, I will be supporting this project tonight. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other, oh, Councilmember Garland?
Hi, thank you. You know, I really appreciated the comments that we've had tonight and that we've received through the mail and other residents that have come up and talked to us about this. You know, I've been having a little bit of a hard time with this lately because of the last, the DRC meeting that we had that you were at, and I was able to see the stair-step progression of buildings and going into, kind of setting up that buffer zone into the neighborhoods. So I will say, the project I like, I mean, it was interesting when it was showing, it was saying that it'll be taking over the green space, and it was actually listed on a map that we had seen the other day. The green space is at Dirt Lot with the concrete pillars in there. So having this be a part of that, that you would be incorporating, I appreciated that. I do like the projects that you have already done on that area, and I do appreciate you showing us those videos or those pictures and talking to us a little bit about it. You know, the important thing for me on this project in this area is something that the mayor had just said about how difficult that has been to try to figure out what we were going to do with it to make it a better place, not be an eyesore when you come out of that beautiful Tempe Center for the Arts and you go into the city of Tempe. The historic preservation portion of that is really important to me, and I appreciate that you are already talking to our staff about that, because that building is slipping away from us every single day.
That's right.
So the sooner that we could start doing anything with that, I think is the best for us. So, you know, I look at the idea of being able to see that what we are voting tonight is just changing a little bit of zoning, but I want you to know, I will be supporting this moving forward, just this vote tonight, but I think it's really important for you to hear this. And I think I've mentioned this before, I agree with about the height, about how high, and I've heard somebody say 18, I've heard somebody say 20 stories. I mean, I don't know, because we don't have a project in front of us right now. But I would like to be able to work with you and really work with our residents to see what we can do on that property without having such an incredible height. So I do think it's, you know, we have the opportunity to do something really incredible here, and I appreciate the fact that you are going to be looking at this and trying to pull all of that together. I just want to be able to let you know in advance that I'm really, really going to be talking to you about the height on this, and I really want to be a part of the discussions that you have with our residents, because I really want to be able to hear what they have to say on that. But I will be voting for this, because I think it's a good opportunity for us to make a difference in that corner. So I just want to say thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you. One other quick thing I wanted to say very quickly, too, and is there anyone else on the phone? I don't want to make sure I'm cutting someone else off who's looking to speak. Just wanted to make one other quick comment, too, just acknowledging Mr. Brown's comment, talking about, we had a, he was referring to a meeting that we had, a joint meeting with the city council and the Development Review Commission, a week and a half, two weeks or so ago, and the time all seems to blend together. The Biden event already feels like it was a week ago. But it was a very, very good informative meeting and a lot of conversation between the DRC and the council about the future of development within our city. Matter of fact, a couple of weeks ago, we had a project that was approved on a 4-3 vote. It was a very split vote, and sometimes people don't see a lot of those, but I think it's a, you know, we talk a lot as a council about kind of what development should look like moving forward, and we want our city to look like, the downtown and some of the surrounding areas. And so I'm excited about having some of those conversations. So I wanted to make sure I acknowledged his, Mr. Brown's comment about, you know, some of what residents' concerns about development and generally speaking, you know, liking to see some of these things play out more, about what do we really want the city to look like and kind of what is the plan moving forward, and sort of in a holistic way, because that's been one of the things that residents at times, just at a general level, have been concerned about, which is, they see things sometimes as sort of happening in a more one-off kind of way, as opposed to kind of what is the grand vision of the city council? What is the grand vision of the DRC, which he served on? And so I think it's great that we are having those conversations as two joint bodies, trying to figure out what is sort of the long game and the long vision for the city of Tempe. So I mean, I'm looking forward to also being able to incorporate some of those discussions in when we have conversations about how this project should move forward. But obviously, you know, seeing the other projects that you've also done in this area as well, you know, there's clearly a vision that you and Mr. Marshall have for the area. And I'd love to be able to kind of talk more about what that looks like as well, like Councilmember Garland said, moving forward, and to kind of bring in some of the conversations that Mr. Brown alluded to regarding the conversations that councils had with DRC and some of our residents, so.
As you know, Todd and I live here, and we work here, and we're around and always available for our discussion, and find that leads to better projects. I think that's been our history, is to continue to work with staff and the council and others to come up with better projects.
Yep, sounds good. Okay. Anyone else on council? Anything else? Just want to, once again, remind everyone, this item actually requires two votes this evening. Councilmember Chin?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Chin, and actually, I should say, too, very quickly, too, just to make sure that Jeff and Ryan don't have to run up here and grab me. The first vote here is on the General Plan Land Use Map Amendment and the General Plan Residential Density Map Amendment. So that's been moved by Councilmember Chin. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Councilmember Gar?
Aye.
Okay, and that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. The second vote is on the zoning map amendment and a planned area development overlay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
Yes. Aye.
And that item also passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you again soon.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. Thank you. The next item under this section is 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt a resolution for a general plan projected density map amendment from high density to high-density urban core, adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from CSS TOD to MU4 TOD, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a new five-story mixed-use development consisting of 167 dwelling units and commercial use on 1.95 acres for Apache Square located at 1747 East Apache Boulevard. The applicant is Gamble and Burnham PLC. Just once again, a note, too, this resolution authorizing the general plan amendment requires at least a two-thirds city council majority, meaning five out of six this evening, for approval. Ms. Voss?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your record, Monjula Voss, Law Firm at Gamble and Burnham. I made a full presentation last time, so unless there's any questions, I will just certainly take any comment. I do want to mention, as we talked about, that I've been talking to Ryan, and we are making some revisions to this plan. We'll be adding some three-bedroom units, making it a little taller, so we will be coming back to you with those revisions that we discussed last time.
Sounds good. Thank you. So we did get a full presentation during the first hearing on this item. I should also note, this is a public hearing item as well. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council? Okay. Yes, Ms. Till, please come forward. State your name in place of resident. You have three minutes. Sorry, I looked down for two seconds. I apologize.
I just want to say I appreciate that the developers worked with the community nearby, and I appreciate that three-bedroom units were added. And I'll look forward to seeing what the height is, because that's always a concern. The height was pretty good before, so hopefully that's not over the top, because I think this is going to unlimited density, so, but it looks like a really good project.
Thank you, Ms. Till. And I appreciate your statements before, and I appreciate Ms. Voss working with you in the neighborhood on those three-bedroom units, because you specifically brought that up, so thank you.
Yeah, well, I know she's worked with Phil Amorosi, too, I believe, and that's really a great thing, when the developers work with the neighborhood, so I wanted to point that out.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or questions? All right, hearing now, just once again, just want to note that this item also requires two votes. The first vote is on the General Plan Projected Density Map Amendment. Do I have a motion? It's been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Yes.
Aye. Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. The second vote is on the zoning map amendment and planned area development overlay in addition to the development plan review. Do I have a motion? It's been moved by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second?
Motion.
Is that a second, Vice Mayor?
Second.
All right. Hearing nothing else, please vote.
Aye.
Yes. Aye.
And that item also passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. Thank you very much, Ms. Voss. Item 8C3 has been removed and rescheduled to the October 12 regular city council meeting, which means the next item under the section is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from GID, General Industrial District, with TOD to MU4 TOD, mixed-use high-density district, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a new 18-story mixed-use development with 539 dwelling units for 955 East Mixed Use located at 955 East University Drive. The applicant is Sender Associates Chartered. Is there a presentation from the applicant, Ms. Sender?
Mr. Mayor, members of council? No, we, in the deference of time, we'll kind of skip the presentation, but we would like to do an update. Questions were from last hearing, included the bird strike issue on the glazing, and we do have a solution for that that we'll be presenting. You want to just mention it a little bit?
Sure. We checked with the American Bird Conservation, and there are some simple solutions that are silencerings that go directly onto the glass. Basically, you know, a dot pattern of two inches by four inches would actually suffice to basically prevent the majority of bird strikes and reduce the threat level for the glazing.
Excellent.
And I apologize, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Garland. Darren Sender, Sender Associates, Tempe, Arizona, and this is Stefan Ritter.
We know you.
I know, but we want to be, want to be proper. Thank you. And then the other issue was, Councilman Navarro asked about the Eighth Street pedestrian pathway, and absolutely, we are working on that. We have mimicked the trees that go along that pathway. We have access to that, so when staff finalizes the plans for that, we'll be right there. So we're right on that pathway, and I think everyone's pretty happy about that, so thank you. Those were the two issues that we had to follow up on.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Mr. Darcy? Yes, please come forward. State your name in place of resident. You have three minutes.
My only concern on this is the project is that it's probably located in one of the most dangerous intersections per capita in Tempe right now, rural and university. Everybody hates going there. Even now, it's almost 10 lanes on each side. Now, you've got Trader Joe's, you've got Canes, you've got Uni Nails, and you've got a few restaurants there, and these are very popular with a lot of people that live on up and down university. The staff report on this said that they were thinking about doing some kind of traffic mitigation after the project is completed and people are moved in after the certificate of occupancy. However, I think that that's way too far in advance. That traffic has to be mitigated immediately before that's broken ground in that area. To get 550 apartments in there, I would say maybe between 700 and 800 to 1,000 inhabitants, no one's going to, just jaywalking along, just going across the street to go to Trader Joe's, go across the street, and then the traffic, can you turn right? Can you turn left? Can you not turn right? Can you not turn left? And what about the women that are going to get their nails done? They're going to walk? They're going to drive? Nobody walks to get Uni Nails to get their nails done. It's not going to happen. They're going to drive the car, cut across the traffic, cut down, and cut into that shopping center right there. Something has to be done with mitigation, either a New Jersey barrier, or one-way, or some kind of median that prevents people from getting across that street. That's going to be, that's going to be a nightmare, a logistics nightmare, and staff really needs to look at that. 700 people, 1,000 people in that area? Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, can we, to Mr. Darcy's point, is there a way, not as obviously as a condition of approval, but can we look at something in that intersection? I know there's been conversation about that, and I've seen what he's talking about with the Canes, where sometimes the traffic kind of backs out onto the street. Is there something we can actually do to kind of proactively take a look at that? I know the developers had a traffic study, but just sort of to look at the general impact of the traffic in that area to see what we might be able to do to mitigate any potential impacts?
Yes, of course, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? This is a public hearing. If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussions? Councilmember Garland?
I just have one. Mr. Darcy, I agree with you about the traffic mitigation, and I appreciate the fact that we're going to be looking at that. When I come to work, I come down rural, and I make a left on university, and every time I do, I'm like, darn it, why didn't I turn sooner? So I agree with you, and I appreciate the fact that our city manager is going to do something about that, or just at least look at it beforehand, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garland? Anyone else? Any further comments, or do I have a motion on the ordinance for a zoning map amendment and a planned area development overlay? It's been moved by Councilmember Garland. Who is the second from?
Councilmember Keating.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Keating. So moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And was that Councilmember Navarro as well?
Aye.
Okay, sounds good. That item is approved six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. And I'm just going to move back around to one other quick thing here. I'd like to move to item 8B1, because this is one of our other development projects here. Ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. There's only one item this evening in this section, which is 8B1, introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a development agreement with Sunbelt Holdings and Venue Projects for the development and lease of the Hayden Flower Mill property. Let's see, I see Josh Rutherford, I think you're the lead on this. Can I ask, I think we're going to do a presentation during the second hearing on this? Is that correct? Okay, all right, thanks. Oh, Ms. Voss, yes?
Welcome back.
Hey, no, welcome back. Come on.
Again, Mayor, for your record, Monjula Voss, Law Firm at Gamble and Burnham. I'm here on behalf of the Sunbelt Holdings and Venue Projects. We appreciate your time. We have some people on our end who are absent. I know that we wanted the whole council to be here, so with your permission, what we'd like to do is, Josh and I are prepared to make a presentation. We'd like to do it the second hearing so that everybody can see it on behalf of the whole team, both on the city and on the behalf of the Sunbelt Venue Project side.
I'm, I'm good with that personally, because I know one of the things with this project that's been a little bit special is, there's been a lot of conversations with folks from historic preservation and a lot of people in the community who've heard about the conceptual for this project. So I think there's been even a lot more visibility into this than a lot of other projects that come forward with us. So normally, while we normally have it during the first hearing, I'm fine having it during the second public hearing, so you can have your full team here and the full council here as well.
Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Garland, good? Thank you. All right. Going back here. This also, I would note though, is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Okay. Seeing none, councilmembers, any comments or discussion on your end? Other than I'm just very excited.
Motion to approve.
Oh, actually, so can you withdraw? No, this is only the first hearing, so.
I'll withdraw.
Thank you. Okay, sounds good. No, no worries, my mayor, thank you.
I'm so excited about the project.
Just want to note, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for October 12th, 2023. All right, so what I'm going to do, just to make this as clean as possible, I'm going to go back to the beginning of the eights, which is the non-consent agenda. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. I did something to my computer here. There we go. Councilmembers who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the councilmembers with the disclosure form at this time. First up, we have miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. First item under the section is 7A1, which is to adopt a notice of intention to increase water, wastewater, and solid waste rates, and set the time and date for the public hearing on proposed increases to 6:00 PM on November 30th, 2023. Any comments or discussion, council? It's been moved by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Thank you so much. Please vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Keating? Councilmember Navarro? All right. And that item passes four to zero with Councilmember Hodge, Councilmember Keating, and Councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A2, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing a maximum dollar amount for an individual job order of up to $1,610,000 for the purpose of procuring construction services for the U.S. Route 60 and Rural Road Valve Vault. Yeah, Valve Vault. Any, any comments or conversation on this item? It's been moved by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item also passes four to zero with Councilmember Hodge, Councilmember Keating, and Councilmember Navarro absent. The next section, item under the section is 8A3, which is to award job order number 22 to FPS Civil LLC for the Water Transmission Inventory and Assessment U.S. Route 60 Valve Vault project located at 4,400 South Rural Road. Any comments or discussion? It's been, it's been moved by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye.
That item also passes four to zero with Councilmember Hodge, Councilmember Keating, and Councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A4, which is to approve amendment number one to the pre-construction contract with M.A. Mortenson Company for the Diablo Stadium Improvements project located at 2,200 West Alameda Drive for additional pre-construction services and the procurement of long-lead construction items. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Chin, seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item also passes four to zero with Councilmembers Hodge, Keating, and Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A5, which is to award job order construction contract addendum number six to FPS Civil LLC to perform on-call underground utility construction services. Council, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye.
That item also passes four to zero with Councilmembers Hodge, Keating, and Navarro absent. The last item under the section is 8A6, which is to award a construction contract to Nesbit Contracting Company Incorporated for the pavement preservation, the Lakes Neighborhood, the Lakes Neighborhood Project located at Baseline Road and Lake Shore Drive. Any comments or discussion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Yes.
That item also passes four to zero with Councilmembers Hodge, Keating, and Navarro absent. That moves us back to item 8C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 33, Article 6, Tempe City Code relating to water wasting by amending sections 33-121, 33-122, 33-124, 33-132, and 33-133. This is a public hearing item. Is anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye.
That item passes four to zero with Councilmembers Hodge, Keating, and Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8C6, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 33, Article 7, Tempe City Code relating to water conservation by amending sections 33-140, 33-141, and 33-142. This is also a public hearing item. So are there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. And Vice Mayor Adams? Vice Mayor, are you there?
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much. And that item passes four to zero with Councilmembers Hodge, Keating, and Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8C7, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located in the intersection of Fairmont Drive and Diablo Way, and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? If so, please get my attention now. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll look for a motion on item 8C7 at a second.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Chin, seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Yes.
This item also passes four to zero with Councilmembers Hodge, Keating, and Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8C8, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the Second Amendment to an easement agreement between the City of Tempe and Vestar CPT, Tempe Marketplace LLC. Said easement agreement grants an exclusive wellsite utility easement between the City of Tempe and Vestar CPT, Tempe Marketplace LLC. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Or do I have a motion? Been moved by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. And Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you so much. That item also passes four to zero with Councilmembers Hodge, Keating, and Navro absent. The last item under the section is 8C9, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at 2,200 West Alameda Drive, which is Tempe Diablo Stadium, and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is also a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Or do I have a motion?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item also passes four to zero with Councilmembers Hodge, Keating, and Navro absent, which brings me back to item seven on our agenda. This is the most juggling I've probably ever had to do, but it was necessary this evening. Item seven is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a councilmember would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the councilmember with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The consent agenda is also listed this evening as miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A7, awards of bids and contracts, items 7B1 through 7B12, and resolutions, items 7C1 through 7C4, with the exception of item 7A5, since it was rescheduled to the October 12th, 2023 regular council meeting. Once again, any agenda item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. Seeing none, I will close that portion of the agenda. I'll look to the clerk now to see if there are any comments received from the public wishing to address the council on a consent agenda public hearing item.
Nothing additional. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. I will also now look to my council colleagues to see if there are any other items that you'd like to have removed from the consent agenda for a separate consideration, with, of course, the exception of 7A5, which will not be voted upon until the October 12th regular council meeting, and item 7B1, which is also being polled, so I can read the correct title text into the record. And anything else? Councilmember Garland? 7C1. Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Chin or Vice Mayor Adams, anything else you'd like removed for separate consideration?
No, thank you.
Okay.
None, none for me.
Thank you so much. Okay, so once again, I'm just going to note that I'm going to look for a motion to approve the consent agenda item with the exception of item 7A5, which will be voted on on October 12th, item 7B1, which has also been polled for separate consideration, and item 7C1. Look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Been moved by Vice Mayor Adams and seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero with Councilmembers Hodge, Keating, and Navro absent. That takes me to the first item that was polled here, which is item 7B1, which is to authorize the city manager or designee to proceed to a formal negotiation phase with community development partners and Junto's Community Developers to formulate an agreement for lease and development of city-owned land consisting of approximately 7.55 acres located at the northeast corner of Dorsey Lane and Apache Boulevard and the southwest corner of Lemon Street and Dorsey Lane, which agreement will require approval from city council on a future agenda. Just wanted to make a quick note that this is the Old Food City property that the city actually acquired back in December of 2021, which we spent quite a bit of money on to try to find a way to bring affordable housing to this area and a grocery option. So I'm very excited about the fact that this is moving forward. I know we got a number of great proposals, and these developers have been selected by staff to move forward with the process, but just wanted to note for the folks on Apache Boulevard and for people in our community at large who have routinely asked me, what's the status of this project? So I wanted to let them know, this is that aforementioned project at Apache and Dorsey, which we've called Apache Central for quite some time. With that said, council, any other further comments or discussion? Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes four to zero with Councilmembers Hodge, Keating, and Navro absent. That takes me to item 7C1, which is to adopt a resolution approving a joint city council policy statement on the issue of unlawful sober living homes. Councilmember Garland?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to pull this because I think this is a really important stand that the City of Tempe is making to make this resolution. You know, there, we have issues with sober living homes in every place all over the state we've been finding. We were able to listen to a presentation at Arizona League of Cities meetings from the City of Surprise and some of the things that they've been going through. You know, Tempe is not exempt from illegal sober living homes that are taking in some of the most vulnerable people in the community, Native American people in the community, and others, and taking advantage of them and putting them into these sober homes, sober living homes. And I wanted to pull this because I think it's really important for us to be able to pay attention to what is going on in your community. In the City of Tempe and across the state, there's a number that you can call. If you see somebody that you, if you are a victim in a sober living home, or if you see somebody that you think might be a victim, you can call 211 and press seven, and you can get some help through that number. The City of Tempe also has a website. You can go on the City of Tempe, tempe.gov, and you can type in sober living homes, and you, there's a, we have a webpage that tells you a little bit more about what sober living homes are and the effect of that. I think the most important thing that I want to say is, you know, the City of Tempe, when we found out about sober living homes and it was brought to our attention, I think I mentioned this at our last council meeting, by one of our security guards, Joseph Littleboll, when you, we found out about this, it was really important for us to, to get all of our departments together, and we have a multi-department task force that meets regularly that goes over information regarding these sober living homes that, again, are affecting the most vulnerable people in our community. So what I can say is the most important thing for you is if you see something, please say something. We can't find out about these sober living homes if we, unless we have the help of the people in our community that can notify us if they think they see one here, and that we can try to do our best to take care of the people in our community and make sure that we stop the future victimization of those vulnerable residents. So, Mayor, that's all I wanted to say. I think it's really important that we're doing this, and I, I hope that as this, if this does pass tonight, I thank our councilmembers and our staff. Tim Burch, who's been pulling this together for the city to, they've been working really hard on this, so I just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Do I have a motion too, Councilmember Garland?
I make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
That item also passes four to zero with Councilmembers Hodge, Keating, and Navro absent, which brings us to the end of our agenda, item number nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I will call upon the councilmembers for their comments. Once again, just want to note that in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on any of these items other than to clarify the request if there's anything that needs to be added for a future agenda. I'm going, I know Councilmember Chin told me she did not have any comments this evening, so I'm going to go here to Vice Mayor Adams first.
No announcements this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Garland?
So the first one is the City of Tempe has a One Tempe, One Book event that's going on, and what this is, is that you can get this book, and I have it right here, Disability Visibility, and it's like a citywide book club. We're going to be doing this through, from October 1st through October 31st, and the hopefully, by uniting readers around one book, the program helps to build a sense of community, promote reading, and develop a shared understanding. The books participants will be reading Disability Visibility, and it's a really, if you see it, it's a very colorful book, but I think it'd be really great if everybody wanted to participate in this. You can reach out to anybody at the library if you have any other questions. There's also a website here that you can click on to learn a little bit more about the book club that we're going to be doing. I hope everybody takes part in this. And the next announcement that I have is, we're doing our next backstage pass, and we're going to be doing it at the Fire Training Center. So we have spaces available if you are interested in coming on down and learning a little bit about the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue and CARE 7. It will be a lot of fun. It's on Saturday, October 14th, from 9:30 to 11:00 AM, and the word has gotten around about this is really popular, and it's a lot of fun. So if you can join us, make sure you get your RSVP into Madeleine McConville. The information is on, on the page right here, and you can also click on my website, and you can reach her that way also, but sign up as soon as possible. Thank you. And I have one announcement that I don't have a slide for, but I just wanted to say, Bob and Jenny, Bob Ramsey and Jenny Norton are incredible and valuable community members that we have that do so much for so many people in our community. And this week, Bob Ramsey was recognized by the president of Israel, Isaac Herzog, for his work in bringing EMS rescue services to the nation of Israel. And they have done so many things here in the city and around the country, and Bob has as far as EMS services and caring for other people in the community, and now he's taking, he's taken it international. And I just wanted to mention that because they are pretty incredible. So I just want to tell them thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Councilmember Garland. I only have one quick remark, just had the opportunity early today to dedicate a building to Mr. Herzl Nahom, who is a longtime property owner and was a merchant in downtown for quite some time. He was, myself and a number of members, our city manager, Rosenczi, our community development manager, Jeff Tamilevich, and a number of us attended, Chief of Staff, Tanya Chavez, and really wanted to thank him. He is 90 years old, but he really was a pioneer in the downtown area, not just simply as He is 90 years old, but he really was a pioneer in the downtown area, not just simply as a property owner, but also as a merchant. So, he had the opportunity with his children there to unveil a beautiful plaque that now sits right on the building, which currently houses Casa, the bar and restaurant that's right there. But just wanted to thank the Nahom family as well, just for, just for everything they've done for the City of Tempe and for believing and investing in our downtown. We obviously continue to see rapid growth in the downtown when it comes to new hotels and Class A office and multifamily residential, and new people moving here and visiting through tourism, but you always want to make sure to thank the pioneers and people who've been longtime inhabitants in downtown Tempe, who've believed in us since the beginning. So, I just wanted to make sure to thank Mr. Nahom for all of his work and for all of his service, and for continuing to believe in the City of Tempe and what the future continues to hold for all of us. So, thank you to Herzal and the whole Nahom family. With that, I don't have any additional announcements, which means I will move to item number 10, public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council? And if so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record. Yes, please. Mr. Darcy?
Thank you, Mayor Woods, City Council. I'm here to address the debacle of the Special Events Task Force. Just a couple, I think it was a year ago, is that they seem to be out of touch with what's going on with Tempe. They can't handle a big city like this. Is that the last one, they had the Zero Waste Day, and then in the same time, Special Events passed, they said, well, we're gonna approve a rock and roll marathon, or it was some kind of run where they closed all the streets. They closed all the streets, and even the employees trying to get to zero waste couldn't even get there. So, in other words, that was a problem, and that was Saturday. The last one was Special Events closed with boots in the park. They closed all the roads. They closed Rio, they closed Rio Salado, they closed Hardy, and then on top of that, they had a football game on top of that. And so, the football traffic was backed all the way on Fifth Street, because now they couldn't go on Rio Salado because of boots in the park. Who approved that? I'm gonna speak to the Special Events Task Force this Thursday. Hopefully, the city manager will be there, and I'd like her to look at what's going on in this. But anyway, they seem to not have any coordination between the events and what the other events are, other than their own agenda on the task force. The other problem I have is their agenda is posted four hours to eight hours before